Okay, good. You go. Great. All right, we're going to kick off our work session today with employee introductions. Nathan?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Your first agenda item tonight is employee introduction. So what we wanted to do is get back in the habit of bringing employees forward and introducing them to you all. We did this a couple of years ago as we're getting out of COVID. So today, we wanted to start with the police department. So I want to turn it over with over to Chief Osborne. Yeah, I'll take it away.
All right, tonight I brought with me two of our sergeants, Adam Nance and Mel Narra. Just kind of exponing on what Nathan said, you know, it's I think it's critical for town leadership to know the mid-level managers and what's driving our organization. I started with the sergeants on purpose because being a sergeant is truly the hardest job in law. They wear so many hats. They're taking care of our frontline people every day. And I ask a lot of our sergeants. They are outstanding. So with that, brief moments to introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Mel Narra. I have been in law enforcement for about 10 years now. I was in the military prior to that for 10 years. Have some combat tours under my belt. I was originally born in Glenwood Springs, so raised over in the Western slopes, so I'm a native. And yeah.
And I'm Adam Nance. I've been with the town of Dillon for 12 years now. And so I'm a I'm a local kid, grew up here, Summit High School graduate. Did some time out in the rainforet, came back to Summit County, been here in law enforcement ever since. And there's so many members of the community that we interact with, I've got to interact with through up here. And many of you I know through that well. So I'm a Colorado kid through and through, do all the Colorado activities, outdoor activities. So very close to our community and people that we have here. Thank you for taking the time for and let us come introduce ourselves.
Boss? Any questions for the two sergeants? No, I thank you. You know, as we talked about, it's so important, right? Starting with the sergeants, these two sergeants, we have one more sergeant to go. I met Adam when he was in high school. Right? Just exactly the people that we want, you know, representing our town, being professionals in our police department. That's where we're starting. So hopefully, as we work through that, you're going to meet all of our officers and support staff. Putting faces with names, building relationships. That's what we need to do. So we're going to be.
Sir? Were you in high school when you met?
So so I'll tell you the story. If I'm wrong, like stop. There was a time in my career that when I did not look like this. I was doing other kinds of operations and Sergeant Nance was actually in the sheriff's office with the Explorer post because he had obvious interest in law enforcement. And I had come out of the jail through the Sally Court, opened the door into a meeting of younger students. And they're like, holy shit, this guy just broke out of jail. So I was not in high school, but I was not that much older, but I was already. Is that about how you remember? All right, that's TMI. Thank you.
Great. And then we'll move. Is that all we have scheduled for today?
That's all for today.
Wetland delineation preliminary report, Dan.
Good evening. Um, tonight we have our wetlands consultants here, Amanda Cruz and Jeff Henderson. Right? All right. And they're going to kind of present their study and just let you know what a wetlands is and how they studied it. Prior to that, really quickly, I just wanted to kind of orient you a little bit up in the screen there. You can see where these two pieces of property that we own exist. There are a little beaver trail kind down by the S curve, go down Dillon Valley. We bought those 21 years ago, almost 22. Yeah, we were exploring diverting water. We have water. Water rights on Straight Creek, and that's an alternate point of diversion. It's been adjudicated. And we were like, well, we could well there, maybe we could build a small water plants and get more water to the town. So we put a 10-inch diameter well in, which is a big well. And we only got about 20 gallons per minute. And the geotechnical engineers were just like, yeah, we don't know why, but the materials in that part of the Straight Creek stratum are just not conducive to transmitting water very fast. So we kind of we sealed the well for this well to seal cap on it. And we just we've owned the property ever since. The water department paid for the property way back when. There used to be a there was a little A frame on there that was kind of decrepit. So we tore that down. It was next to the well. But um, anyway, that's that's kind of the history of why we bought it. So we've been sitting on it. And then thinking about it, you know, it just it sits there and and we knew it had some wetlands from time to time. There was a time where those wetlands had ponds in them. And there's a man-made berm down the middle of the lot, which you can see in the survey. If you could scroll down one. When we purchased the lots, that shows you there, the blue are just the whites are just contours. That next picture there, when we purchased the lots, the green lot is town within the town limits, that slot 50. And then the blue, the cyan light blue lot 135 came with two little triangle parcels on the other side of the interstate. Yeah, it was part of one parcel, but when they put the interstate right way back in the late 60s, early 70s, they cut it in half. So we have those two little triangles over there, too. So someday we'll probably get rid of those. It's surrounded by Silverthorne open space. So it's a it'd be a logical thing just to turn it over. So we don't have any liability or anything with those parcels. So just one of those little weird things that we have. Again, lot 135 actually exists in the county. So it's not within the town of Dillon Municipal. So if we did a project down there, we would have to annex 135 into into the town, whereas lot 50 is already in the town. Scroll down, please. The next picture. I'm a picture guy. So what we did real briefly is under nationwide permits with the Army Corps, we can do certain things with wetlands. When we rebuilt the boat ramp back in the spring, we had to get two nationwide permits, one to rebuild the boat ramp. So we built it. It's actually smaller than it was from a concrete footprint standpoint. Then we had to get a second nationwide permit. There's all these things and Amanda and Jeff could go into all that, but there's a big book of them. And then we, in order to build the storm sewer across the the boat ramp over to another thing, it was a very small thing, it didn't impact the wetlands. But we had to get a separate nationwide permit to do that. A nationwide permit lets you do things without a lot of hassle, if you will. When you get over a half acre of wetlands removals, you get into replacements and you get into advertising, you have to, you know, come up with your plan and advertise it, and the public can comment on it, things like that. But a nationwide permit's a little simpler. So what we wanted to show you is that this, these two parcels that we own, we could develop an affordable housing or workforce housing project on them over time. And so what you see here is a proposed concept day, I called it, where we can find an acre of developable area on lot 50. And that keeps it all within the town. And then depending on, you know, what you're trying to accomplish down there, how many units, how tall, it will dictate what that project looks like. But the green air, the green areas would be a half acre removal that we could do under a nationwide permit. Okay, up to that. And but it gives you kind of a ballpark what could be the the developable area that we could create down there. If you scroll down to the next little picture, that's another one where we put more of a perfect or parallel, it's a little beaver trail lot that's a little about 1.1 acres. To put that in perspective, the sail-off buildings that are on on La Bonte by the park, that was, we sold them a total of 1.19 acres. And they put two sail-off style buildings on there and parking, and they have a park down by Fiedler. So it's a significant opportunity if the town council wanted to kind of pursue that to some extent. You wouldn't have to necessarily create a one-acre developable site, but it is kind of a it's a it's just something that's sitting there that we could use for workforce housing. The nice thing about it is we have all the utilities there. We have sewer, we have water, we have a road that be a small addition to the amount of traffic, especially from Dillon Valley, to add the traffic from this to that, and all the electric and gas and everything is in place. So it's a really desire, it's a really developable site. If we exercise that wetlands removal under the nationwide permit. So just keep that in mind. That's why we're doing this exercise. So the first question was, well, where are the wetlands? How big are they? And so that's what we hired Pinyan to do. So I'll let them do their report. And then I put some questions in there like we always do. But you guys don't need to necessarily answer them specifically tonight, but just start thinking about them.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amanda Cruz and I'm here at Pinyan.
Jeff Henderson, a lot of detail of this stuff.
And so we're going to talk a bit about the wetland donation that we did at lot 50 and lot 135. First, Jeff's going to go into Pinyan, who we are, what we do, and why we were brought onto the project. Then he's going to go into some more detail on what wetland is, and then talk a bit about the specifics of the wetlands at lot 50 and 135. Some of the characterizations that that we saw out there. And then I can give a quick kind of recap on what some permitting situations might look like, state permitting versus federal permitting, and then we'll kind of wrap it up with what's been done next year. All right.
Cool. Yes, you. I'm good. Okay, cool. So yeah, I was just going to kind of introduce Pinyan Environmental. As Dan said, we were hired by the town. Well, Pinyan Environmental, we're an environmental consulting firm based out of Lakewood, Colorado. We offer a variety of services across the array of markets. You can see up there, I won't go too long. Amanda and I are part of the Biological Resources Technical Service Group. And to dive more into that. I guess that's easy. Okay, what or who we are and what do we do as the Biological Resources Service and Technical Group at Pinyan? We're made up of biologists, botanists, ecologists, specialists, and landscape designers. Like I said, I'm an botanic ecologist. And the reason why we're here is because of town of Dillon, I have Pinyan or contracted Pinyan for our expertise in compliance and permitting. And that kind of leads me into the focus of this doc. We're going to talk about compliance and permitting with wetlands. Just an overview of wetlands and how we determine what a wetland is. So when I say wetlands, I don't know what comes to mind. It could be beavers, it could be moose, it could be a marsh, it could be a roadside ditch. But the Army Corps of Engineers has a definition, and that's an area that's covered by water or has waterlogged soils for long periods of time, usually typically during the growing season. So if you read that, that's pretty subjective. And how do we actually know what a wetland is or isn't? There are three criteria that we look at. Those three criteria that we look at, it's hydrophytic vegetation, hydroic soil, and wetland hydrology. And we need all three of these components, characteristics, for an area to be considered a wetland by definition of the Army Corps of Engineers. So these are all photos from lot 50 and 135 from our site visit. And I've got to just do a high-level overview of what these are, and I think we'll have time for questions. So the first one is hydrophytic vegetation. This refers to plants that prefer water. All plant species or most plant species have an indicator status, and that ranges from upland to obligate wetland. A plant species that has an upland indicator status is a plant that is typically found in a plant species that has a obligate wetland indicator status is a plant species that is typically found in a wetland environment. So it's kind of hard to see. But in that picture, I think that was from lot 50. We have a bunch of willows and birch species, as well as some sedges and gremenoids. So there's a bunch of Canada blue joint, touch hair grass. And if you look at the indicator status of all these plants, you'll see that they all have some kind of wetland indicator status, which is typical for that kind of environment. So moving to hydroic soil. This kind of gets into some chemistry stuff, and I won't put people to sleep if I dive too deep into it. But hydroic soil is basically soils that have developed or formed due to saturation. And that can be from ponding events or flooding events, or sometimes, you know, groundwater influence within the area. And again, it's kind of hard to see, but that is one of our test soil pits. So we have to dig soil pits to see exactly what the chemistry components of the soil look like. On site, we did see a lot of redox dark surface and redox suppression. Won't go too detailed on that, but the key word is redox. And what is redox? Redox is the accumulation or buildup of iron and magnates within the soil. So it kind of looks like rust-colored particles within the soil, and that's an indicator of a hydroic soil. The last thing is wetland hydrology. This is pretty straightforward. Wetland hydrology just refers to the hydrologic condition of the site. That could be, is water present, was water present, is water going to be present, is water available? A lot of times we look at the topography of the site compared to the localized area. So it's hard to see, but I'm standing on that man-made berm that kind of separates the two lots. And as you can see, I'm looking down into one of the wetlands that we delineated. And you can see that's a large depression area, which means that's an area that can accumulate water, and that's an area that can retain moisture. So we do have wetland hydrology. So just to go to show you some more site photos, some of the key takeaways, we do have two wetlands areas that we delineated, both in these large suppressions that man-made berm splits it. Straight Creek flows along the northern boundary of the site, which may also provide hydrologic influence to these wetland areas through groundwater. Um, let's see. Yeah, point out the vegetation again. It was pretty distinct. If you've been to that area and you look down from the road, and you will notice distinct wetland vegetation, which is this plant species with that wetland indicator status. And then as you transition out of depression up to the slopes, you'll notice that that plant community changes to upland species. And then just to summarize, Pinyan's findings from our wetland delineation on the lots. We completed a wetland delineation back in August. Two areas were identified and we call it wetland one and wetland two, separated by that berm, as I mentioned. In total, it's about 1.35 acres wetlands on the site. And typically, how do we describe these wetlands? They are dominantly scrubbed shrub wetlands with patches of emergent wet. So what does that mean? That's just a naming classification that we use to characterize the type of wetland based on the vegetation. So scrub shrubs, you think it'd be willows, your alders, your birches, your tree saplings. And then your emergent wetlands are your fords and herbaceous gremenoids. And then with that, that's all I got. I'll pass it to Amanda, who will talk more about the regulatory requirements.
Like Dan had mentioned a little earlier, it's really important to get out there and to quantify the types of wetlands out there to determine what kind of permit might be required. So it could be a state or a federal permit. So I'll go into a little bit of detail, not too much, just about the different kinds of permits. So the first permit I'm going to talk about is the Section 404 of the Clean Water Act. And so this is a federal program through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers that regulates the discharge of dredge or fill material, which can mean soil, rock, or construction debris into waters of the U.S. or WOTUS. And so the definition of WOTUS has changed a couple of times in the last few years, most recently in 2023 with the Sackett versus EPA decision that kind of narrowed the definition of WOTUS. And so now WOTUS are kind of characterized by either a traditional navigable water or an interstate water, something that's relatively permanent, and also wetlands that have direct surface flow to these kinds of And so any kind of dredge or fill material that is placed in a WOTUS would require a Section 404 permit. So Colorado House Bill 241379, after the Sackett decision and the kind of narrowing of that WOTUS definition, the state or the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment started to come up with their own state permitting program. It's still ongoing. They're still trying to figure out exactly how they're going to authorize these waters at the state. But they wanted to continue to regulate discharges of dredge and fill material into waters of the state that are no longer federally protected. So these are kind of considered Sackett Gap waters. So those include like an ephemeral stream or maybe an isolated wetland that's not connected to this. Jeff kind of mentioned that Straight Creek was located north of our wetlands, and there is a connection between our wetlands and that stream. So for the purpose of this project, we're likely going to assume that they are federally jurisdictional, and so we'll go through the federal Section 404 permitting process. And Dan talked about it a little bit when he was showing some photos of the the concept plans. Another important part of completing a wetland delineation, like as you're developing these design plans, is so that you can try to avoid and minimize impacts as much as you can. So these two concepts, as you mentioned, both have half an acre of less of impacts to WOTUS because that's a common threshold for a nationwide permit. He talked a little bit about individual permits. Once you, you know, are above that threshold, there's a longer permitting process, a public comment period. So it's important to kind of, if we want to keep a project moving, to find ways to minimize any impacts to natural resources. So just to kind of recap what we did in 2025, and if a project in this area were to move forward, some of the things that we would do in 2026. So in 2025, Jeff completed the wetland delineation. And so a few weeks ago, we submitted our delineation report and some additional information to the Corps. And so now we're waiting on an approved jurisdictional determination. And so what this is, is a document that will take a look at all the information that we provided, and the Corps is the only entity that can determine whether or not wetlands are considered or not. And that chance that they would come back and say that they're not technically WOTUS, we would go through a similar process with the state. But then in 2026, you know, if we are moving forward with any kind of development on these two lots, we would start working on what's needed for a Section 404 permit. And so addition to the wetland delineation, there's also a threat and endangered species habitat assessment and some cultural resource assessments that are required for that Section 404 permit. And like we talked a little bit about, the nationwide permit, there are pre-construction notifications and non-notifying memos. We'll we'll probably go the pre-construction notification route. Again, if there are additional impacts greater than the half an acre, it might kick it up into a an individual permit. But obviously, trying to, yeah, make sure that we're not impacting wetlands. For both instances, there are wetland mitigation involved. So that could be looking at the wetlands on site and enhancing them or creating new wetlands or paying some kind of fee into a bank. But there is some kind of wetland mitigation aspect of the Section 404 permit, 404 permit as well. And another thing to note, if anything falls under Section 404 permit, then it also fulfills the state permitting. So you don't do both, you either the the federal or the state permitting. So that's kind of just a quick overview of state and federal permitting, not quite as interesting as the wetland delineation stuff. But it's important to know the process and just make sure that we're aligning on, you know, community goals while also protecting natural resources. I think we, yeah, we have some time for questions if anyone, I'm not sure if folks were able to review that wetland delineation report.
So what happens if endangered species are found in that half acre or two half acres?
So, yeah, so we would go out there and do a habitat assessment. We look at federally listed species, we look at state listed species and their habitat. And then if there are potential impacts, we would have to do some coordination with CPW. We would likely coordinate with U.S. Special Wildlife. There are certain mitigation measures, like time of year restrictions, like if we were going to do development or we had to do any kind of like tree clearing, we make sure that we're doing it outside of bird breeding seasons and things like that. So that would mean that we would just be working with folks from U.S. Special Wildlife and CPW to make sure that, you know, we're we're taking certain precautions to protect species on site.
Other questions? Great. Well, thanks for your work on this. It's
very interesting.
Let's see. Do we want to pursue a residential development for this project on these lots? Anyone have a thought on that? Set of interest still?
Uh, yeah, I was I was thinking if we move it into housing, into the housing realm and out of the water realm, I think that would be a good thing. And if we could look for a partner. I think it's, it is a good space for that. So I like the idea. And I didn't know, you know, we're talking about Habitat for Humanity tonight, you know, if that's even a possible partner for this space. Since they just did something similar.
It's not totally similar, but out in Summit Cove.
On a curve in the road.
Yeah. Yes, that was, it just jumped into my mind that way.
Yeah, yeah, great. So looking for other partners. Any other thoughts on so the housing project?
How does the water decree that's there? I assume it's it's not conditional, but it's decreed? How does that interact with the?
It's just an alternate point of diversion. So right now we have a
So it's a swapping point?
No, we'd have to have a water rights, explain it to you fully. But it's just an alternate point of diversion. So we have our main diversion up Straight Creek, up in the Forest Service property. We have adjustments up there to get there on Forest Service property. And we split that diversion with Dillon Valley District. Okay, and when Denver Water condemned most of the land and bought the rest of it, they they gave us that water right. So it's a senior right at seven CFS on Straight Creek. So the first seven CFS out of Straight Creek, we get split with Dillon Valley 50/50. But it just allows us to take part of our three and a half from this point if we need to.
And and putting housing there would not interfere with that in any way?
Because we'll never use that right now. I mean, maybe during construction, you can figure out there's a better well location or something. But for for now, there's really no there's really no plan to use that there. So and I would just say too, the first meeting in January, I think you guys have a kind of a a planning session. Is that still correct? So I don't know that you need to answer everything today, but just kind of think about what you want over the next month and think about, you know, if you want to kind of pursue a housing project down there, we can hire different design groups that kind of look at different ways to to develop that. And it really comes down to what you guys are looking for. Again, you can easily put one sail-off or maybe two, one and a half sail-off style buildings there, but that gets into a 50-foot building where the underlying zoning is more like 40, the zone mixed use, but we could always do a PED down there. The next three properties as you head towards Highway 6 are all residential. So and we just most recently did the Summit State Residential Project, and that one was done under a jurisdictional, I forget that, a jurisdictional exception. But anyway, so there's there's ways to do it. But I think the main thing to think about over the next month is kind of what what goal would be for that property if you wanted it? Do you want townhomes? Are we looking at apartments? I think, you know, putting smaller apartments in there to get more, you know, I think that's an underserved part of our community, or the busboys and the grocery workers and stuff, something like that. The other thing we've been working on, we got that, it's been putting that in my updates, but we hired a survey, the same survey that did this, another component of this project, is we did a new ALTA survey. So that's a highfalutin way to say it's a very fancy survey that's accepted by survey professionals. So so we have a new ALTA survey for this lot. We did a title commitment to make sure there wasn't anything funny going on. So that's a requirement of an ALTA survey. So we got that completed, too. So the next steps really, one, you guys need to talk about it, think about it for a month, and come back with maybe goals for this lot. The next step for them, it's not in their contract yet, would be threatened species. The next step for them, it's not in their contract yet, would be threatened species assessment. We haven't done that yet. And I don't think it's super complicated, but. We budgeted this year three hundred thousand dollars for designing workforce housing predominantly to replace the townhouse facility. And we used, we didn't spend any money on that, but we used thirty thousand that to pay for their contract, a little over thirty. And so we could use some more of that money or figure it out. There's money in the housing fund to pay for the threatened species assessment. So we can all get a proposal from them to do that. And then this process through the WOTUS, the waters of the US, what that means. That could be a three to six month process, especially with the government shutdown. Everything just stopped. And so we're, it'll be pretty bit backed up. So I wouldn't even expect to hear back from them, maybe till Bayish. Maybe it'll happen faster, but it's, it's the federal government and they, they do, they care about this stuff and we do too. That's why we're doing it. So I would just say there's no real hurry, but to start thinking about, you know, if you want to do that. And I think for us, then one of the main things was if we can sell the property from the water plant. The water fund to the housing fund, if it puts more money into the water fund. And that are, that'll help pay for like the water main. We're trying to do up the Corinthian Hill water tank, you know, just. That's, that was kind of the impetus from it. So, but again, we need to wait on the federal government to figure out what they're going to do. And then we'll do this, we can go ahead and get the native species or threatened species. And do you guys do the archaeological stuff? So we'll probably do that too. If you're okay with that, we can, it'll be a smaller contract that Nathan could sign. But that just looks for indigenous people's artifacts, stuff like arrowheads, pottery and things like that. So, or anything else, maybe a dinosaur, right? Yeah, okay, dinosaur bones. So anyway, we can, we can get proposals and bring those back here again sometime in January. For those two things, just get a feel for that. But then we'll be more lined up with everything and that'll answer some of the questions you had.
Any other thoughts or questions on this?
Great idea.
I think it's a great location, walkable, you know, certainly up to Dillon Ridge. Seems like it makes a lot of sense. I think anytime we try to build on wetlands, it's going to be frowned upon, especially in Colorado. So. I don't think it's a good place for housing. I don't think it'd be attractive to live right next to the interstate, to build a new building next to the interstate. It seems to me that. We'd be jumping through a whole lot of hoops that. A lot more hoops to put a property there. When I don't think it should be there.
I could see it either way, really. I think it's like cool opportunity that we have the land, that you could put this sort of dense housing there. But I sort of, I, I disagree that it's a good walkable spot because you're sort of stuck down that road. And until there's a sidewalk going from the Super Eight up that section of the highway. It's not super walkable unless you sort of scale that kind of retaining wall area. And I think people drive really fast on that part of the road. Like I got double yellow lines leaving school drop off the other day because I was not driving fast enough on that stretch of the road. But I think we should definitely be exploring it as housing and partnership opportunities. And I think the need for affordable housing is more probably important than the need for. Super high end housing, I guess, so. I think we should keep exploring it.
Let's just add, you know, Nathan and I have been working with surveyor that did their thing to. Survey the rest of Little Beaver Trail, Highway six and up Dillon Ridge all the way to Inzalas. And once we get that survey back at the end of the year, I'll start working on some preliminary designs for the sidewalk. Yeah, because it's really needed down there. And what the county is doing right now is they're having a company redesign their stretch of. Little Beaver Trail from these lots, Lot one thirty five, all the way back to Dillon Valley. And the plan would be they don't build sidewalks because they don't want to maintain them as a sidewalk. But they're going to put four foot concrete shoulders on the side of a new road section. So that's kind of the preliminary plan. I don't want to commit them to that, but that's what they've been working on. So they don't have those plans done yet, but we've been coordinating with them and also the town of Silverthorne. And we've worked with the town engineer to get that sidewalk all the way out to the highway. So those kind of things are in the works and they're definitely possible.
So getting a sidewalk out to the highway and then going up the highway?
Yes, up by, I always call it Blockbuster because.
Yeah, yeah, Blockbuster.
But the Verizon, I used to say Vegas building, used to be a Blockbuster, the whole thing.
That whole thing was the Blockbuster?
Yeah, when I first got to the Blockbusters was where, I think, well, the old pharmacy was the city market. Then they built that in two thousand four and moved in there. It was big. And then Blockbuster changed. Hard to imagine, huh? Oh, and I would just, the only other thing, we don't know anything about that lot historically, why the berm's there and all that stuff. We just bought it from some guy that owned Dayframe, so we don't have any idea why it was configured that way.
We did another wetland study a couple of years ago that we didn't do anything with. Do you remember what I'm talking about? It was like the national registration of wetlands or something like that. And at the time, the council decided not to do anything, but this was, I thought, one of the areas where we were starting to think about that. And ultimately we said, well, if this is going to impact people's insurance, we don't want to touch it. Do you remember what I'm?
Yeah, we did two things. I think Ned, they redid the wetlands regulations probably in the last five or six years. In the town, and that's probably part of it. But then the other component is the floodplain component. And it's one of those things where the floodplain, it's an important issue to bring up. I think I put that in there is that we don't, we still don't participate in the national flood insurance map. Doesn't mean there's not a floodplain there, but what it means is that people won't be able to necessarily get mortgages for their homes next to the river. That's a private insurance thing. They don't cover flooding. So you have to get it from the federal government. If we don't participate in this, in the program. Those people can't get flood insurance. So something that you might want to revisit down the road. Or it becomes a for rental project that may be sponsored by the town or something. So maybe there's probably twenty things to do to kind of, like any development, there's a lot of things to think through. But so there's a lot of steps to get from here to a workforce housing project, so.
Great. Everyone good with Dan continuing down this road? Are the majority of us can, okay with this? Okay, great. Thanks, Dan. Thank you, Amanda and Jeff. And. Up next, we have the Soda Creek Workforce Housing Opportunity with Habitat for Humanity Partnership.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Including your packet are all the documents that were included in. Our last regular meeting presentation pertaining to this. Potential partnership to create workforce housing in conjunction with Habitat for Humanity and also Summit County Housing. This is a follow-up conversation, so I'll turn it back over to you. I guess one thing I should mention. I don't know why my internet's not working. But if you look at the, the budget for the, the Workforce Housing Five A Fund at the end of twenty twenty six. There's approximately three million seven hundred and fifty thousand left in that fund. If we were to spend every dime that you have allocated in the budget that is up for consideration tonight in the regular meeting. So there is money available if you were to consider the requested five hundred thousand dollars to be a partner in this project.
Thanks. Council opinions, thoughts? Anyone given it much thought since our previous presentation?
Yeah, I, I thought it over at length and I, I do like it. I, I like the fact that it's in Summit Cove and most of Summit Cove, you know, flows into Dillon and spends their money here. So I, I like the design. I like the collaboration. I like the project in general. Those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Barb. Anyone else want to put themselves out on the yes or no as far as participation?
I haven't made my mind up yet, but I think there are a lot of discussions going on. With the first part of twenty six that might be asking for those funds. In, within the town limits. And I'm just unsure of whether that amount of money. Should be diverted to the county versus our Corps. That's just my thoughts.
Anyone else?
When do we have to make a commitment?
I would think the sooner, sooner the better, so they can move forward.
Yes, to your point, we may have other. Projects to consider, so.
I think there's lots of projects that are emerging. And other peoples that are inquiring. And that haven't even. That haven't stepped up yet.
That's why I like the timeframe would be.
Timing, yeah, timing.
Important, you know, so that we can consider like all.
I, I would like to have all. I'd like, that's what I would like to see before deciding. I, I think. The money going to the peripheral is, is fine if there's not other options. But if there are other options, I, I think we're, you know, we have other important priorities that are. Directly within our boundaries.
It's not like Dillon workforce will have. Living in the county could live there. So it's not like it's a special to Dillon.
So Kyle, you're leaning more towards now or you're still in sort of the could go either way kind of field?
I, I can go either way. It's a great. It's a great project. I just don't know if. For you to commit that kind of money.
Linda?
Feeling the same way. I like the project. I like working with Habitat, the idea of working with them. I wish it was in the Corps or, but again, like Barb said, a lot of people at the Cove. Are in Dillon all the time. But if we do. I'm on the fence as well.
Oliver?
Timing does matter, and I think we'd all prefer to see something within town limits. But, you know, this is a project that appears to be in pretty good shape. They're ready, I think, to start moving dirt. I, I missed the conversation at the last meeting, but it sounds like they're willing and ready to move dirt. I, I would, I would be a proponent, supporting it. Yeah, they are good to, they're, it sounds like they're ready to go. We don't have anything else that far along. So, and I, I respect the concept of, you know, inside the town boundaries. But when are other projects going to come, you know, for our review? Who knows? Could be a month, could be six months. I burden the hands with the bush, whatever the phrase is.
I was going to say that exact same thing. That's exactly what I was thinking is, sure, we can wait and hold on to it and see what comes up. But this is sort of an opportunity that we kill maybe by not participating in. And, you know, we push forward by participating in and make happen. So I'd be in favor of supporting it. It's right for our community. And right now it is an opportunity sitting in front of us.
They, they do, they do need two other participants besides us in order to move forward. So even if we step up. It's not a done deal.
Well, you could, you could make it conditional upon that. I think to, to Councilmember Richard's point earlier. This could be a way to bring partners into the, the previous agenda item.
Yeah. We'd like to participate and we've got other ideas kind of thing.
Yeah.
Thoughts on that approach?
Well, yeah, because I was thinking of a smaller, not a sail offs down in the, on the Little Beaver Trail. I was thinking of a smaller construction, you know, down there. So, so that's why I mentioned Habitat, but it's just a possible partner.
And so what you're, what we're saying is that three point seven five. Be left if we spend all the money budgeted in, in twenty twenty five. Which means that if we commit money to this project, we still are going to have over three billion dollars.
That's correct, yes. That's the ending fund balance at the end of twenty twenty six.
And yeah, and I thought, I thought they were saying it was shovel ready to go, so.
It is shovel ready. They do have their entitlements. They're ready to go. They just need funding.
Yeah, let's do it. What's happening?
So Josh and Linda, you're the only ones I'm hearing with still a little hesitation. Would you be? Was, would the rest of this conversation push you over to that, to a yes or?
I'm open minded.
Okay. So, so yeah, I mean, if they can get the funding, we're willing to participate and we'd like it to come along with a strong suggestion that we have another lot. We'd like consider development for, with partners. Does that sound good? Great. Great. We're a little ahead of schedule now. Nathan, do you have any more questions on this or do you want to take a little break and let the one oh three Main Street Group? Arrive. Mark, I see that you're here. Are you waiting for your partners? All right, do you want to wait for Bobby? We can take a little break or we can? Okay. Sure, maybe we can, we can move a couple of things forward and kind of, maybe we'll, we'll try to keep you more, more on your schedule. Okay. That sound okay, everyone?
Real quick, Madam Mayor, on, on the previous agenda item for the Habitat for Humanity. We'll bring forward a resolution at an upcoming meeting for the five hundred thousand conditional upon other partners.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe pen a letter that suggests we would like to be involved in future partnerships. That we can look at.
Okay.
And can we jump into the tiki bar RFP discussion?
If you would like, yes.
Great, let's go ahead and do that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council. Tonight I'm bringing back the tiki bar RFP for further review. I've worked with the town attorneys on this and have made multiple revisions based on Councilmember Richard's request. I know you still have some concerns about this one. I guess I was just curious if other council members had feedback as well.
Thoughts? Anyone? Feedback for John?
Do you want me to cover my concern?
Yeah, I think I got the email this morning.
Yeah, so do you want me to just cover that real quick? So, okay. So I thought it was way better than the other concession or lease agreement. Thank you. And my main concern was that I thought there was a phased approach to operating the tiki bar. That we had in a prior RFP, but it's not really outlined in this one. And my concern is if the seawall project goes forward. Does this concessionaire have to pivot to the, if the entire space is under construction in twenty twenty seven? Then are we giving them a heads up of that they may have to operate it as is? Then do something else, then come back to a refreshed space? And I guess, you know, I don't know, Craig, what you're, you know, telling people when they come to do tours. So that was my concern is that. How does this work if the seawall, which is in the current budget, goes forward? And do we need to let the, the applicants know?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea to let them know that. Yeah, I think that's a good idea to let them know that's going to be happening in 2027.
Well, the, the budget for 2027 is not set yet. So what we did based off of your all's direction is push that seawall out. So that could change based on your goals and priorities, if that's something you all want to do. Uh, the direction that we received this year is that that really wasn't a priority. So that's why we push it out and we pushed it out to 2027 just because we couldn't fund it in 2020. So that was the next year, just to keep it on the horizon to have that discussion again next year. Probably every year after until we land on a decision. Um, so that's why that's there. So that could move. But I think at, at any point in time, since the, the construction of the seawall is not scheduled for 2026. You're gonna run up against that no matter which way you look at it.
Yeah. So I just think perhaps concessionaire or possible concessionaires just need to know that this is, there is a. Project down there, but it may improve the whole operation area. So I don't, I don't know how you give them a heads up, but. That's. It would just make, if they're making decisions on the type of materials to put in there and to suggest. They, you'd want to have things that are more mobile, that can get out of the way. And go elsewhere if, if the seawall has to be, is the, the seawall is decided to, to be constructed. And I also wondered, can the seawall be phased? Is there, you know, does it all have to happen in one year? Or I don't know how those.
We'd probably prefer it to happen in one year just because of mobilization costs, but then there's a lot of. Different variables and probably the biggest variable being uh, water levels. That are unforeseen. If you can get in there and get it all done, you probably want to do that instead of risk it for the next year. But as was everything, when you see this with some of these other projects that we face, people don't like being under construction year after year after year. So we, we'd want to try to do that in one year.
It, it's my opinion and obviously I'm not the only opinion in the room, but phasing it would be very difficult. It's, it's a project that once started would have to be completed. There's so much infrastructure that's there. And in addition to that, all of the. Towns infrastructure that we're trying to put in to close that loop in the water line. Sewer, everything else. And again, like, like Nathan said, depending on water levels like this year would be the perfect year. But we don't have funding for that. So, and then it's also my opinion that, you know, that the amount of money. Uh, that, that project will take is um, a stretch. So I feel, I, I've been, to answer your earlier question, been very honest with people that are interested in the project. Letting them, them know uh, what the plans are. The RFP, I believe, is for five years. Uh, I would. I can only imagine that it would take at least those five years to be able to get the funding. To be able to do this project.
Is the, since we already did the other section of the seawalls, is the design or the engineering kind of already in? Place? Is it just cookie cutter and can go to the next section?
I don't believe it's cookie cutter. Uh, yeah, we're still at the, I mean, we're, we're kind of at the pause phase on this right now. Now, Dan, who? Hello?
Dan's not up here.
Yeah, Dan's not up here, but I, there, there are funds there for the engineering. As you know, that takes time. And a lot of permitting and efforts, kind of like the conversation that we just had. So. I don't foresee. Uh, that the seawall is going to be a viable project within the term of this RFP. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Um, but that, that's my opinion.
What would the? Seawall project? Interrupt or? The Marina operations?
It would be remarkably. I mean, it, it, it would, it would have to happen. Basically this time of year. We would have to move a whole lot of stuff. And get it done and get it back.
So it could be done through the winter?
Yeah, that's the, the, the last improvement happened. Um, they broke ground roughly this time of year when the water was low enough to be able to do it. So that, that would be viable for us. Otherwise. It, it would, it would shut us down. For a summer. So, but you, you gotta hit it when the water's low. And generally the water is low. About ish where it is, maybe not this early.
Other comments or questions? About the RP? For Craig's input? If we think it might not happen, like Craig says, in the next five years, is this good to go?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, Oliver, you're good with that? Great, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig.
Yep.
Um, and thanks staff for all your work on this. Um, let's see, nonprofit grant recommendations discussion. Nathan?
Just a second, sorry. Technical difficulties. Thanks, Madam Mayor. Including your packet is uh. The nonprofit application uh, review committee. So. We had 40 applications for the upcoming 2026 year. Uh, there's a amount of funding breakdown, uh, the, the different number of applicants. For each total for 30,000. Uh, in here. And um. Are we ready to move forward with this? Sorry.
Questions for Nathan?
Uh, do we, what kind of grant applications and? Are they? It's, I'm not aware.
Uh, we don't have those attached to this. Do we?
Also in the.
Just give me a, just give me a.
From different nonprofits within the county. Um, so we get what like, we got about 60, some odd, 60 to 70 applications. And staff, a group of staff went through with different criteria, you know, who operates within the town of Dylan and. How to, how does, how do their operations impact the town of Dylan? So we tried to be very impartial and fair and. Tried to, you know, allocate funds, looking at what we did last year. And there are a few different um, filters that we, we looked at this through.
So we'll announce them like in the newsletter or some things that the. So people know that we do grants? Oh no, but I meant like publicity on it. Does it, do we tell people that we do grants like that?
Oh, we can. I mean, all four towns, Dylan, Breck, Ridge, Frisco. Other and they um, at the same time of the year. And they all apply. So, I mean, we can put an email out to say who we gave money to if we want to.
Will just be interesting to know. Thank you.
Yeah.
In the past, we've had, I think, council members on this committee. Did we? Did we decide to skip that? And I just don't remember that. I think it became a little burdensome.
Yeah.
You were on the.
I wasn't.
And I think Rachel, and there may have been somebody else on the group as well. It was actually, I do recall it was. Difficult to get some information. I mean, some things were self-explanatory, soccer club or whatever, but I think there were a handful of nonprofits that.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Doing or.
Thank you staff for doing this.
We, we just wanted to get it done, get it done efficiently and well, and we thought you would entrust us to, to do that.
So all, all 40 meet the qualifications of the application and its budget?
Yes.
Great.
I'm, I'm fine.
We bring this up every year, but is there a better way to do this?
The, the only thing I think we talked about last year is, is, is to like, maybe um, give out fewer grants to make a bigger bank for our buck, you know? I mean. To give um. It was like a bunch. They got like 540.
There's, the default was 500.
500 bucks. And you know, it was nice and all, but like to give 40 organizations or wait, oh my, 26, $500. I would rather see.
Six, six people get 5,000?
And I know you're gonna say no to a lot.
Yeah.
And maybe 500 makes a big, you know, I'm sure it makes a big difference to some organizations.
Well, maybe that's where council can give direction as to the, the types of organizations that you want to prioritize and, you know. And then we can take it from there and, and whittle that down to a more substantial donation per.
Cause I, I remember it being, yes.
It's like a $30,000 budget.
To, yeah, you know, determine like, you know, objectively, I guess.
Right.
I know there's some things like that, but that would be my only suggestion that we give out fewer grants.
And have more of an impact.
And.
Yeah.
So is it a, is it a combined grant application across all the municipalities or all the jurisdictions? So everyone's filling out the same grant? Okay. So the people who get 500 might get 500 from everybody. So it adds, it does add up.
It could, you know, so there's, I'm sure it makes a big difference to some of these small.
Yeah. And, and a lot of the ones who did get 500 were only asking for like a thousand or 500. So that's where that came into play too.
Okay.
But we could change it. So like as an example, uh. Right now we're working with the other towns with the, the nicotine tax dollars that are pooled with like public health. That we do. Various different grants via the nicotine tax for. Uh, we're working with the Summit Foundation to uh. Work on an application process and a vetting process to then. More properly and adequately distribute those funds instead of. These individuals coming individually to each individual town and just go to the Summit Foundation and let them handle it.
I like that idea.
So like if there is a process like that. Be more beneficial?
I think it would be, but that's just my opinion.
Well, we could write, we could write, if it was, if they were Dylan nonprofits, that, that we could write recommendations for them if they're going to the Summit Foundation. I mean, there could be a process like that.
I mean, how many non, how many on this list are actually nonprofit organizations that are in the town of Dylan that serve only Dylan residents? Probably hardly any.
A small percentage.
I mean, it's more county wide, I would think, that most of these nonprofits are. You know. Serving our, our whole county, really.
Any of these changes compelling to anyone? Doing it a little differently or kind of stay?
My sense of telling me the Summit Foundation would have a much better bead on all the nonprofits doing all the, you know, the good things. Kids, senior citizens, whatever. I mean, that, you know, that's their business, right? They, I think they're much. Up to speed with what they're doing and how efficient, you know, they are. I, I do remember now that, you know, we tried to take into consideration, you know, based in Dylan, but that just may have been a, an ad. And they were doing the work at Frisco or Silverthorne. I didn't. That, that, that was effectively kind of worthless in a sense, you know?
Yeah.
To try to figure out, is this really serving the Dylan community? Well, I think headquartered in Dylan.
Yeah, it's more based in Dylan. Like, because they, but we do have a number of nonprofits based here, so. Were those the type of people who were applying?
Everyone applied. Um, the ones who have received the top funding, a lot of them were based, were from Dylan.
Okay. Thank you.
Are the other, sorry, did, are the other towns pooling their money? Is that what you said? It was going to be a group effort to do that?
Uh, well, I, I'm sorry to confuse things. That was two separate things. Uh, I was using the nicotine tax and what we're negotiating or negotiations with. The Summit Foundation on as a potential example of what we could do and mirror. That as an example of what we could do with this.
Yeah. That sounds like a conversation we should sort of send over to mayor's managers, commissioners and kind of see what interest there is from the other groups.
It could streamline some things and it, it, it could potentially. You know. Try to eliminate uh, duplication of services.
Great. Any other comments on this? Should we bring that up on Thursday at MMC?
We could.
Just as sort of like a future, whatever idea? Is it, is that the direction everyone would be okay with going if, if the rest of the community wanted to do that? And if they don't, maybe keep it in-house?
I mean, I'd be willing to serve on the grant. Giving board. I don't know what to call it. The Grant Review Committee.
Love that.
Um, any other comments? Great. Thanks for your work on this. Um, are you, Mark and Bobby, are you guys ready to go? You want to go? The 103 Main Street residential parking discussion will be next.
Uh, thanks, Madam Mayor. Um. So in front of you tonight, I know this is sort of like, uh. We're coming full circle yet again. And the reason for that is that. This project, what they are looking at doing, uh, requires some form of council action. Because they want to do an, an adaptive reuse. Meaning that they want to take the commercial building and potentially put in residential, meaning that they need to have parking. So we're now back to the whole parking discussion. So uh, in front of you tonight is, they're going to talk to you about potentially acquiring land. Uh, potential easement, leasing ground, et cetera, all of which. Uh, is up to you all as the governing body as to what you all want to do. So what I wanted to do is get uh, Mark and Bobby and Eddie, unfortunately Eddie couldn't be here tonight. In front of you all because it seems like this uh, discussion is going to continually happen until we make a decision as to what we want to do. Now, if we were to go back in time. Maybe that project that they pitched to us a couple of months ago could be on the table if we wanted to sell them land. Because right now where we're at is we're back to, they need the land to have the parking because the code requires the parking to have the residential. So any which way you look at it, you all are going to have to weigh in as, in as to what you all want to do to try to help. This building become revitalized. So without further ado, um, Ned, do you have anything to add or should we turn it over to the applicant? Okay.
Same thing. Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. I'm Bobby Craig with Rappel Architects and uh, Mark is here. Eddie couldn't make it. Yeah, we're just trying to come up with ways to reuse the existing building. Trying to reimagine what uses can be in there. And uh, we still feel a restaurant on the corner is the highest and best use there. Uh, but residential, we feel is also a need and much easier for us to get tenants or. Uh, whatever. So that's the idea. Um. Do you have the page two? I think there's a colored rendering. Thank you. This is the same. This is the same site plan you received in your package, I thought I'd walk you through what what we're proposing. The gray L is our existing building and our property line. And most of the overhangs actually go over the property line into town property. What we would like to do is create a patio on the corner for that, uh, commercial restaurant space and then two residential units in the rest of the building. Right now, you can barely see the the property because of all the trees, but, uh, you know, we we feel this is a easily achievable scheme that we can come up with, cost-effective. Uh, and by the way, uh, thank you for your support with the re-roofing, we've already reinforced the roof and got a membrane on that first or right quarter. Anyway, to do this though, we need to go through a PUD process requesting residential on the ground floor. That is allowed, but we need your permission. Uh, the second big issue is the land around the building. And I I see it as three components. Uh, the first one I'll call the patio space, uh, along Lake Dylan Drive. Uh, the next is the incidental land around the building. On the north side, there's an alley or a, an easement for utilities, a shared, uh, but we would like that land and then also the land on the south of the building between it and Main Street. Then the last component is the parking area. And just so you know, this property dash line is what we had proposed before. We didn't bother changing it and it is actually almost identical to the map that the town produced. At least the north property line, the east and west are identical, which includes the parking area. Uh, the only thing we're asking for is more land on the south. If you notice, we are proposing a lot of green space, open space, landscaping. Uh, a lot of it is trees that are overgrown, aspens and so on, so we want to clean that up and, uh, it make it a green spot in this sea of asphalt that's around us. Could, could we go back to the first slide? Thank you. This is comparing on the left, the existing condition and on the right, what we're proposing. And, uh, this shows an entirely new roof on that corner. That's for the commercial space, we can get a vaulted ceiling, make it more dramatic, get some upper or higher glass in there and then open it on to the patio area. Everything else we're proposing to keep as is, uh, the sidewalks, the concrete walls, uh, the concrete block around the corner. We are, uh, gonna add one stair from the sidewalk on Lake Dylan up to, uh, the entry. On the other side is gonna be an ADA accessible route. New windows, new doors, we're gonna add some windows to get better views and then, uh, improve this in the exterior. We'd really like to just talk to you guys, answer your questions, get any comments? Mark, you doing that?
Mark Richmond, uh, when I moved here in nineteen seventy-nine, this building was a mixed-use building. It was occupied by, uh, an art gallery and a residence. And I think originally it was a realtor and a residence. So, uh, I've even heard there's a swimming pool that was filled in, in the floor in the, uh, northwest corner. It's, it's not a bad place to live, honestly, that the, it is so quiet in there. It holds heat and cold rather well. And, uh, I think it really would make a pretty dynamic corner if we had people there. And honestly, if you look around the town center now, we are missing actual people, so it it seems to me mixed use makes some sense and we'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
Could we go back one frame to the, just the site plan there? So, my thoughts, I I I like the proposed patio and the anchor of a restaurant. I like the idea of the green space around. To me, as a a past real estate owner and business person, you already have an anchor if you're gonna put a rec, uh, a restaurant on that corner. It would, it would seem natural to me to have those other two spaces, commercial. You could put ski tune shop, bike shop, coffee shop. It would seem to be a natural to team up multiple businesses for that specific spot. So, when, when we, not a bad place to live, it's, it might be an excellent place to do business. And, um, might solve the pop parking issue. Acquisition and certainly the design of that corner would be greatly improved. That's just my thoughts.
On the south side of the building where there, where it says, uh, landscape and it's got a big tree?
That's a column of trees, there's.
Could that be diagonal parking?
It's pretty steep there.
Main street.
They'd have to be retaining wall, yeah.
Not sure, it would probably interfere in the sidewalk. Which we're proposing to leave as is. Well, I'll tell you, I I do understand your concerns about the residential. Honestly, you know, I came in here that space on the right was gonna be my office. And we've just been back and forth with our discussions about what we can rent it for, how quickly we can rent it. And, you know, I was just looking for the Dylan Coffee Lab, one guy there says, I'll rent it tomorrow. He didn't even have a car, he's, he'd love to rent one of those spaces, so.
It it just seems to me, uh, when you have a corner piece of property like that, that's that the visibility and once you change that would be very dominant. It just seems to me to be a natural to put two more commercial entities there, whether it be, I mean, like I said, you have an anchor already, it's gonna attract people. Making those other two commercials only gonna attract more people.
I agree with that, I I don't really think this is appropriate for residential, if you're talking about having sort of a busy, cool restaurant there. It doesn't make sense to me to bend the rules to try to force residential in there. Because to me, I agree with Josh, it makes a ton of sense that you'd have two more businesses in there. Or you try to like push it as a, you know, business center here. Um, it's not like they would be on the second floor, right? They're right there on the ground floor with everyone else. And if that restaurant's gonna be, let's just consider it like, like the Arapo Cafe was in our community, people are gonna be there until late at night. And I don't think people are gonna want to live next to that anymore than they would have wanted to live, you know, in the Arapo Cafe building. With the pub down under going on all night.
I mean, it's a great improvement to the corner, just as a site plan. If if you, if you didn't attach, uh, a label of residential or commercial to unit two or three, just as it sits, it looks quite beautiful.
Okay, what about something in the middle, as we're always trying to get to yes? At some point back in the day, probably ten or twelve years ago, there was some discussion about like, you know, think brownstones or whatever, where they were artist galleries in the front with a studio in the back for like a live-work kind of space. Did you consider that at all?
I think we looked at, uh, actually vertical though, where the ground floor be your shop or studio. And then your living would be on the second, third. I don't know, I I I think that might even be a harder lease than either straight commercial or straight residential as a unit. Then I've done it's a mixed-use unit.
Well, Danny, you you did propose that with the last rendering.
Yeah.
But again, it gets back to park.
Parking's still an issue for any resident.
And the, and the land, if they were to scrape that footprint, they could only build that for footprint again.
So, is the reason why you are leaning towards making those two units residential versus commercial because it's easier, it's it's a better profit for you? I mean, it makes more sense for you as.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We we feel it's a better investment, it's easier to lease and we can lease more, more per square foot, for sure. And if in the future we ever sold it, it would sell. And that's fairly common. How many people would disagree with that?
And right now, it's all, it's owned all.
Correct. Well, no, it 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 could be mixed users.
Oh, yeah.
It could be residential on the upper floors. It, and I don't have the code section.
It's a conditional use.
Yeah. For resident.
And and to add, uh, what Bobby said, it makes the the restaurant more affordable. The restaurant space is is among, I I think Eddie said it's like fifteen thousand square feet. We have vacant commercial right now, something like that. So, uh, we need, we need help with the cost of this project and residential makes it work. It, uh, if we wanna add three thousand more feet to the vacant fifteen thousand feet, I'm not sure where we're getting. Not sure we're gonna find, why would, why would people want our building rather than the other fifteen thousand feet?
It's in a great location though, so.
It it is.
Yeah, so the, looking at the restaurant, that's a very small restaurant, so I assume you're looking at more of a coffee shop? In one thousand two hundred and thirty-two square feet?
Yeah, I I think that's a small restaurant, but.
So, that's small, yeah, so my question then was, um, uh, cause before you said you were kind of looking at restaurant and office space, so my my questions were, that's pretty small, so that's, I understand where you're going with that as far as a small, uh, um, whatever, it's very small. Then I'm I'm also concerned about, you've got three bedrooms and nine, one hundred and seventy-two square feet. I mean, that's pretty small three-bedroom too, so, um, I wondered, of course, can you pop the top and get, can you put upstairs residential? And I assume, I know, I realize that that's more costly, but the, can that building handle that? Can you pop the top and put residential upstairs and?
We have to add footings and interior panels that pick up some of the.
Okay.
Yeah, it's do.
Uh.
We are trying to minimize the
Yeah.
Structural impacts on the building right now.
Um.
And and just, I I I kind of disagree, twelve hundred is a great size for a restaurant. You know, it's small, but, uh, that gives you enough for a kitchen, your kitchen can be four or five hundred square feet. You have plenty of seating, then outside, we have almost five hundred square feet, so.
Yeah, you can, you can expand.
It's a sweet spot, I think, for, I mean, we, we do stuff at four hundred square, that's small.
Well, that's the coffee lab.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, but, uh, the restaurant that size, you, I mean, you have a kitchen, a dish room, a storage, office space, I mean, you, it's, you're, that's small and I'm not saying small is terrible. I just was thinking of a larger restaurant there, when you were talking about it before. Um, I had a couple of questions on, um, parking, so in the past, and I realize this is way in the past, but I'm still gonna ask, so how what, how is the Meridian? And I don't know the proper name for Little Brown Drug, whatever its proper name is over there, the dentist's office and the Payne Building, so how, how was all of that residential parking handled?
That's our parking, just town-owned parking.
Okay, so it's our town-owned parking, do we lease it to those buildings or this was done so far in the past that it's just gone?
Done so far in the past, but those tenants have to, uh, register with us once per year to get a residential parking pass, residential overnight parking pass. Uh, it's a heavily discounted pass, I think it's a hundred dollars per year for those tenants, for those residential tenants, uh, for the interior core lots.
So, that's how that's handled currently?
Correct.
That, is that allowed in the code anymore?
No.
No?
Okay.
Um.
That's why it'd have to be in our, um.
PUD.
PUD, okay.
What's the difference in the revenue if it's residential versus commercial? What, how much more does it allow you if it's residential? Well, well, you're saying it, it makes, it it's more sense to have it residential because you can recover revenue versus your investment. If it's commercial, so what's that difference?
So, two-bedroom residential, i- if we got rid of the three, we went to two, which I think maybe makes more sense. Is, it's roughly twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars for a two-bedroom, uh, uh, unit. That, the, the restaurant itself, if it rented for twenty dollars a foot, that would be a lot. That would be a lot, and so it's and and then there's the challenge of finishing the restaurant space. So, that's a huge number to figure out how to.
So, so could, could, could some, could that difference be compensated via TIFs? So, if you were given, and I I'm just speaking my opinion here, so if if you were to keep it commercial but did some compensation with tax incentive financing to return some of what you're missing for residential.
Sure.
Then that might in-incentiva-incentivize you to wanna do commercial, because isn't, it's just my opinion, but that to me looks commercial. And so, how how do we get to a point where financially it it more equalizes the decision for you to to make that decision? It's just the thought.
It's also a demand question, and there's fifteen thousand or whatever square feet of commercial that's not.
I get it, but that's, but, but.
Not on Lake.
Not in, not, not in our town core and not on that corner.
It's all, it's all.
I know, but.
It's right next door to us. Yeah, it's, it's across the street, it's next door.
The point is, I don't think the council here, that I'm hearing tonight, is sold on this being a resident, being appropriate for resident. I'm not hearing anyone say that. That they, that they, they would take the bait on this.
I would.
You would.
I would.
I think what what you're trying to do, and you, um, I assume you've scraped this a thousand different ways to try to figure out. You're, you, you wanna use sort of subsidy from residential to help support.
Yeah.
Commercial entity.
Absolutely.
This is a dilapidated building and you guys have been at it now for I don't know how many years. And and, and I I wanna see us try to get to a yes on this because we're gonna need some baby steps to really begin to reinvent the core. You know, I mean, this, we may, we may think something else should be there, commercial activity, but if there's fifteen thousand square feet of commercial space available right, right now today, I wouldn't, if I were in your shoes, you know, open up more commercial. I I I think residential, you know, is fine, I don't, I don't have a problem. In that location, even with a, you know, restaurant adjacent to it.
So, it's just market residential, that's not workforce, nothing, uh, you know, and and it's rental, it's, you, you're not intending to sell the. Okay.
To rent it, and and it would be market, but it makes sense to. To rent it, and, and it would be market, but it makes sense to try and get locals, we'd be willing to work on that.
And. And, and. Do short-term rentals, do long-term only rentals?
A primary residence, that's what we believe the town core needs.
Maybe it could be the restaurant owner.
That, there you go, exactly, exactly. And, and the, if the restaurant owner came along and said, we want two thousand feet, and we'd love a two-bedroom unit in the back. We'd be happy to do that, but the restaurant owners are not knocking on our door right now.
And I think it's premature to give up parking right at this moment in time. If it was the middle of twenty-six. And we could sit here and say there's nothing on the table, then that's another story, but, uh. I think it's premature to make that decision on giving up parking at this point in time.
So there's three parts of the land that I'm trying to identify, the patio side, incidental around the building, and then part.
Right.
So.
And I like two out of the three.
Okay.
And, and.
We understand the parking has to be there for doing residential, so there.
But maybe there are other alternatives, and if the council had the time to. You know, we, we, we talk about options, but I, I think there's a point on the calendar in mid-twenty-six that. Then we could say we've seen all our options, I don't think we can say that now.
I like, I also wanted to say, I like the idea of keeping the mature landscaping, I think that is smart, and if you're gonna put a. Restaurant operation there, it just adds to it immediately, the ambiance, so.
I'd rather see a larger restaurant. And I'm also concerned about the, the proposed patio area being ADA accessible. Because you have the accessible ramp on this side, but then you have stairs to get down to the patio, and I think that could lead to problems if. You know, like at the amphitheater. People who need a- accessible spaces have to have access to the same things that everyone else does. And if they can't get to the patio, then I don't think it's gonna get off the ground.
So little leeway in the building code for reusing buildings. And then we have to get at least one, but we'll take a look at that. See.
Well, can you go down the north side?
Right, like out that back door and around?
Yeah.
Something like that.
I mean, there's. It, it's, I find it all intriguing, I find it all intriguing, I just don't know how to. Uh, where to go with it.
Doug, did you have something?
Yeah, um. Thank you, Adamia, the, uh. Characterization of three types of land, um, is the kind of business utilization of land, but in terms of process. I believe Main Street is right-of-way and would require an ordinance to vacate and would automatically go to the property owner adjacent. And the rest of the surrounding land is what. Uh, staff is working on creating the Lot one oh three, I think, Lot one oh one, you had the, the map there.
Uh, they called it Lot one oh one. On your diagram, that one that came.
Yeah.
Breaking up all that.
So the Lot one oh one would just require the resolution. Um, obviously, there's a difference between the ordinance and resolution about things like referendums. Repeals.
Just for record, this, this did include that area of the parking that we're showing. So that's where we got it.
It's not a, not an approved plan yet.
I understand.
It's only proposed. Hopefully.
Well, we said it wasn't promissory, remember, I asked that over and over and over.
Yes, that's the distinction, it is a proposed plat.
Yes.
And even if it was to be replatted and create Lot one oh one, that would not create any rights to the. Lot E, are you Lot E? Whichever that lot is, the one oh three mains it's on.
C, C ones.
Yeah, so Lot C one doesn't automatically get a right to Lot one oh one, that would still just be town land, just sliced and diced a different way.
Thank you. Some other thoughts here? Ashton jumped in.
What, what, what is your thoughts on timetable, like in, in your scheduling? This is a discussion, we're trying to get ideas on the table, try to see what can happen on both sides.
We. Building down to studs from the inside. Uh, get the remainder of the flat roof, the. Eastern two-thirds of the building supported. Uh, the structure is still not quite sound enough, and that can happen during the winter. But the ultimate use, uh, and it would take a while to get through a P U D process if we were to proceed with any residential. So, we could work on that this winter.
And, and the timing of you working on it through the winter? And council dealing with what issues may or may not come before it. Maybe that timing is ideal coming out of the winter.
Yes.
To then make some decisions of whether, of. How the council would like to see some things move forward, maybe our opinions change as we move into the, out of the winter. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we'd like to be under construction on the outside in the spring. That would be ideal, we could do that April or May.
Any other feedback right now?
My only other question was, you know, we had talked about the leasing of town land instead of selling it, and so I'd still like to learn more about that possibility.
Uh, was that a question for me about the future of leasing? Uh, so there's, there's lots of potential ways that you could do things, uh. I discussed with staff briefly before the meeting. One of the troubles with anything other than a sale is you'll be stuck in a perpetual problem. If there's residences there and people feel like they own the space, and you terminate the lease. That, then you leave those people without parking, and you leave their lots without. You know, they, they'll be grandfathered in, but you'll essentially destroy the value of their property. For sale, because they don't have parking rights, they're non-compliant. Uh, it's sort of a half measure. And in many ways, in reality, you're gonna be ending up, do you sell the land or you don't, do you give away control, or do you not? I know ninety-nine-year leases seem like a really long time, uh, but towns are immortal. Uh, there might be seven property owners down the road, and someone discovers their parking is at year ninety-eight of the lease. So. It does feed into the bigger question of how to facilitate redevelopment, um. Lenders would prefer to see fee simple ownership. Uh. Developers prefer to see ownership. And if you sell, if you have a lease on the land, and this building does eventually fall to the ground, then what do you do? We'll be back at the problem that, do you only allow them to build on the same footprint? Do you allow them to build on a new lot? It's going to be incredibly difficult for anyone to redevelop any of this property. Within the existing footprints of the building without a sale of additional land, and that, maybe we're fine with that, but. It will make it more difficult for any, I mean, these guys have come back three times on this one building, and every time it comes back to. We really need more land, we can't build within a three thousand five hundred square foot building.
Three thousand one hundred and seventy-seven.
I was doing quick math, uh. So that's, that's just a small building to really see a transformative development. You're correct, the restaurant is going to be not a massive restaurant, it will be. You know, that's enough space for a fast casual, maybe, nine hundred square feet's probably too small for second and third commercial spaces. But that's the building that they're working with, that's the lot lines that they're working with, they're really trapped with. What they've got. So leasing, uh, long-term lease and easement is all gonna run into the same problem that. You're not really fixing the problem, these, these buildings can't be redeveloped in their existing footprints. Possible, but maybe not the best.
And, and if I could add, I think. I'll call it the incidental land, has no value to anyone else, but does that value to us? And in a typical city, that's, we would own that land, then the patio area, I kind of think of as the same thing. No one else could ever build there, so it's a lot more valuable for us. So, that land, I mean, just the fact that our overhangs are already in-town property, means that something should be addressed right now. The parking, I think that's a whole other issue, we've already talked about it, but, you know, I understand, you don't want to give up your parking. And, or control of the parking, and that's an issue with residential as well. You don't want residential. Hey. Should we do anything else?
We really appreciate you doing this so quickly.
Yes.
That really helps us, that maybe we can have a partnership.
We returned it in on Wednesday, it made it to us.
Let me define it up.
Quick, quick report. So thank you.
I think you have a council that's motivated to get you to something that's a yes, we just have to find that right thing.
Thank you.
Um, and then up next, we'll go to staff reports. Scott, thank you for your report.
Thank you, um. I wanted to make sure, Josh, that you, you had a question earlier about the water rights related to the property that we had the well in study, and I wanted to make sure that. Um, I gave you an answer for that, so related to, um, the water rights that we have for Straight Creek and Alaski Gulch. We have conditional water rights for alternative, uh, point of use, um, along Straight Creek. And though that conditional right, it happens to be five well sites. Um, along Straight Creek from the diversion, uh, location. All the way down to where Straight Creek connects to the Blue River, which is down by the factory stores. So that's a conditional decree that we have. Um, they do have specific locations, but, um, we do have the ability, if we think there's a better location, we can sometimes. Um, petition to have the location that's noted right now in the decree, uh, moved, but we haven't done that, um. But if the, whatever happens to the property, the water right does not go away, so I hope that answers what.
But, but that, that spot is conditional?
It is a conditional water right, it is an alternative point of use along Straight Creek.
And then you go back every five to seven years?
Every six years, I have to do what's called a diligence filing. And it just so happens that that particular right, along with, um, Straight Creek and Alaski Gulch are currently under review by the water courts. We just renewed, I just got approval, um, from our water attorneys on the, uh. Old Dawn Reservoir and the, um, Blue River Intake Decree.
So any object, have there been objectors on that specific?
Only, the only trouble that we've had is that the courts are getting a little bit tougher on some of these exchanges and conditional uses. If you haven't, um, put them to use or have a pretty good plan on how you're gonna use them, and so the, you know. Um, the, the courts don't want you to speculate on water rights in the state of Colorado. So luckily, we have a pretty comprehensive, um, uh, plan for use of that water, which I shared with you. Um, it's usually not an issue, so, um, I work with our water attorney. Um, whenever we file a diligence, then there's a draft that I look at, and I have to, I have to show our expenditures and our progress towards. Making use of those water rights for the past six years, and then there's usually a narrative that I help, I collaborate on with the water attorneys.
I- if that property change, if, if, if the wetlands change, and, and the use goes to. Housing or something, is that gonna affect that right?
So it will, the water right will stay intact, our ability to actually, if we're gonna make use of it and build something, like some kind of an intake structure. Becomes more limited, right, because the property's been used, but the good news is, is that, um, we have four other sites along Straight Creek. That if we decided we needed another alternative source, um, we could pick one of those, those other sites. So as a, as a well site, like Dan said, um, we did do a test drill, and, um, it was not a very productive well, so. I would want to pick another location anyway. Yep, the other update, um, we're, we're underway with commencement, um, of, of the CT Basin. Um, making sure that works and does what we needed to do, so we're just about done with that project. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just wanted to say, thanks for doing the amazing lights, whoever all is involved in that, and.
Uh, Evan kind of has that up.
There we go, Evan, so, uh, guests, guest responses to it were great, gorgeous, beautiful, I never knew Dylan had these parks, I. Um, it was really great and amazing, because a lot of the people, families were here, particularly for the World Cup racing, and they needed stuff to do with the kids after. Dark, so, um, the only comment that I heard was to go from, I call it the globe, but it's the bulb. By Pug Ryan's, people could not tell that there was the stuff down at the Marina Park. Like, uh, we had to send them down there, so if there were some way to create something on the fence or something to lead people down. To the park, that, I would, uh, just ask maybe if you consider that.
Yeah, we can take a look at it, I do not believe, I'd, I'd have to take a look at that, I don't, I think we're limited in power.
That's what I wondered.
In that location, but, uh, maybe that's something, if, if, uh, you know, we're considering adding, um. Uh, some lighting down there for when there's concerts, uh, at that intersection, maybe there's a, maybe there's an electrical run, we could make up the road. Um, for the future to accomplish that, so.
But Marina Park in particular looked really, really beautiful, and I.
The front, the front entrance, I think, looks beautiful.
Yeah, it's all doing very well.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Scott.
Did you have, I thought you raised your hand and had a question.
Wasn't sure I was gonna bark up this tree quite yet.
Okay.
Can I compliment Scott and his team for hosting me, at least on your, on the, uh. Tour of the water facilities, it was very educational, I would encourage folks, if they have the time, to go do it.
I think everybody made it, except for Rachel, I think you weren't available, and, um, I know that there was some interest in, at some point, and maybe. Uh, taking a look at the Joint Sewer Authority, which we are co-operators of, and, uh. All, uh, maybe, um, sometime in the spring, I'll see if we can set up some kind of a tour down there at the J S A.
Well, the joint meeting at the headworks. Anybody know what that is? You don't want to know. I'll just say you'll get.
Um. Is there anything we can do about timing our snow removal in the town's core?
So we, we've looked at that, um, and I, I think, um. What one individual is asking for is that for us to not do anything until like seven or eight o'clock in the morning. And the problem is, is that doesn't work, and so, um. What we've done is we have tried to, so we need, we need to start at four, because we need to be done by seven or eight with what we're doing. Um, our expectation is the public is gonna start making use of our roadways, our sidewalks, and our parking lots, starting about seven or eight. And lasting until about ten o'clock at night. And so our objective is to get the roads that are safe. Um, that are accessible for, um, the public, and that includes residents and businesses and visitors. Um, and our goal is to do that as, um, operationally, as efficient and, um. That, that we can with, for the least amount of cost. And so it just turns out that, um, that particular time from four A M to, to eight A M. Is, um, the best time for us to get in there, there's, there's literally no cars out on the road. Um, there's no cars in the parking lot, we have cars parked in the parking lots where they're supposed to be. So we can get out there and we can do everything that we need to do, um, to get the town ready by seven or eight o'clock in the morning for use by the public. Um, so that's what we're aiming for, keep in mind that. So that's what we're aiming for. Keep in mind that our operations to do are initial pass. So initial pass for us takes four hours, five pieces of equipment and five operators. So that's why we start at four o'clock in the morning. If we didn't start then, then we businesses would be just absolutely coming unglued. So we have looked at what can we do to kind of, we, so we have patterns, everything that we do, we have patterns. And when do we hit this road versus when do we hit that road? And so we've looked at that for that particular road and we've made some adjustments and we've tried to be accommodating. The issue is, is that that is a bus route. And the buses, what is the bus that started six? Is that right? When you start coming? I think it's six o'clock in the morning. So not only is it a Sunday stage route, but it's also a school district bus route. So it's on our priority list to get that plowed and accessible and safe for that purpose. So, you know, we're again, and this is we have complaints from time to time, but I think for most people, our operations and what we do, I think people understand that in this environment, this, this is kind of what we, we have to do. What we do is no different than, I've had very good relations with the Public Works Directors in Silverthorne, Frisco and Breckenridge. And we've had this conversation about how, what we do operationally and when we do it and the timing. And what we do is no different than any other community, not only in Summit County, but in Colorado.
Thanks.
Yep. Thank you.
Chief, did you have anything you wanted to report to us tonight?
Oh. Maybe I should drop. People need to slow down. Weather's coming in. Along those lines, there's going to be a caller. We're going to talk about the night of the 26th, there was a vehicle that left the roadway on Highway six. We're going to bring that body cam in front of you in the next couple of weeks. You want to look at what your money's paying for. It happened that night with two of our officers. Recovering minor exposure injuries. Four injured too critically. But as of today, everybody's alive. So I look forward to bringing that one to you. That's one that we haven't done a lot of, of bringing body cam into in front of councils, especially the newer people. Clearly, I think it's good to start looking at some of the things that are happening that people may or may not know about. We had that discussion right before we had an officer involved shooting, so we might get on bringing a little bit more video into the next. We have a car coming online finally. We have three that are getting built, so multi-year project finally getting complete. Because I know that that has been brought up in the past of what our capital looks like. We're going to pull the supplementals. It has taken a really long time. So hopefully the efficiencies come a little better in the future, what that looks like. And then I did kind of want to address some communication. I was provided an email this afternoon requesting information that needed to be provided today. I would ask as a council, if you have stuff that you're requesting of that, timing and professionalism really can help. I do not want to not provide something in a timely manner, especially when it's as sensitive as the requested information today. I think that that is incredibly important. And if we can pre-plan that or have stuff laid out in a better way, I can assure you there are certain things that I will do next year differently than what happened this year, especially with our budget. Right? So I would just, just in essence, to make sure that you're getting the information that you need in a timely manner and the way that you want it. Please provide us with the notice to do that.
That would be me. And I was asking for it just because I wanted to solve a question before the budget meeting tonight. So I wasn't pushing for it. Any other reason was I just wanted to get the information before the budget discussion so that I would be more well informed. So it is what it is. So I will just be asking my questions during the budget review versus having.
Totally agree.
Yeah, versus having, I was trying to get the information behind, you know, not necessarily behind the scenes, but to get the, I'm trying to educate myself and I was trying to get the information prior to the open meeting.
Yeah, I, I couldn't appreciate that more, right? And the questions, especially on budgets, I mean, read the newspaper. Right? Especially when it comes to law enforcement right now, we are not them. Okay, so I can totally appreciate the need to know that stuff and I want to be in a position to provide all of that information. I also moonlight with another council who has the same questions, who also requested to do a budget workshop, which we get. That's why I say next year of that. There's going to be certain stuff that we're going to work through. Like I said, those questions, we expect those questions. They're great questions.
It's, well, it's startup. You're, you're scaling up at startup. So, you know, it's, it's a whole new.
We're in process. Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. And that agreement was already unanimously approved by both councils. But I think it is important, especially, and this is one thing that I didn't think about, is, you know, there's new people in council that weren't involved with the first part of it. Right? So if you don't understand the concept and scope of that, that's pretty significant. But at the end of the day, you know, that's already laid out in 2028. And when you look at what the split will be from 2024 to 2028, your police department budget's only going to increase maybe 600,000, but your resources double. So some people got that because they were involved with a lot of the, the startup and that, you know, the conversations that were better than a year and a half, right? So that I'm going to include into the state of the department for, so everybody can actually track what that movement looks like. Because clearly it didn't come out in the budget narrative either, because our org chart is actually laid out. Is it going to work that way? No. Why it's not going to work that way, even in 2026, just because I ask for things, doesn't mean that I get them, right? For the police department, because we can afford it, right? And predominantly it's personal. Right? So just because it looks that great in 28, and if we could get there and our budget is trending that way, that would be great. It truly would be a miracle to pull off the entirety, the entire project that way would be great. Do I anticipate that? No. You know, because at the end of the day, what drives us is what we can afford and not afford. You know, we have a very clear mission and it is expensive to do the work that we are doing. But obviously, you know, budgets are that way because there's a lot of stuff that we can't afford. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to really bring that up and, and have a respectful discussion on what that looks like. The, the thing with Dylan that, that is really challenging is Dylan is really thin. Right? From a staff perspective, Dylan is really thin. Right? So when there's stuff that's coming from all different sides of that, it's really hard when you're trying to get stuff done through your normal course, course of work. And there's all of a sudden four other things. You know, prioritization comes in that some people may agree with what the priorities look like. Some people may not. But it is what it is. We have a significant group of professionals that work for the town of Dylan. Everybody does good work, but realize we don't have a lot of depth here on purpose. Right? When you look at our total budget and what that looks like, so it really makes things challenging sometimes when one person is taking complaints. You know, the complaint thing is, we deal with complaints pretty regularly. We actually get more compliments and complaints, which I'd like to keep that trend. But from the complaint perspective, you have some people that are really unhappy that they're applying so early in the morning. And you have some other people that are really unhappy because they're not, they're not applying. Right? And this is a two block area. So little perspective of that, but you know, everybody's trying to pull the same direction. You know, that, that's my message coming into the year. Holy crap, there's a lot of stuff that has really gotten done well. There's a lot of work to do and everybody's doing work. And we need to do it together. I don't think, there's nobody that's not in the room that is very aware and driving towards making Dylan a better place. You know, just even there's a discussion with these gentlemen, like, I love your comment of, man, we're, we're trying to get there. It's a, it's rarely dynamic, right? You know, I appreciate that motion because we're all just trying to do the right thing and move forward, but we need to do it together. That's me coming from the police department standpoint. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, chief.
Any questions for me?
Thank you, chief. I would actually have council member comments and committee reports. Anybody?
I've got a quick PrAC report update. They had a meeting last night. Couple of bullet points. There's going to be no PrAC meeting in January in 2026, so it won't be, next meeting will be until February. They had a, they received and approved of a, I guess, a drawing and the back the project for the dedication of the town park ball field to David Albright sign, to Albright, the sign that they had proposed. And they wanted to point out that they will be moving forward with it. And that the stone base is going to base, it's going to match what they've been using in town park and over by the amphitheater. And that it will be a, also a steel and aluminum structure. The committee suggested to include a brief history of baseball in Dylan on the back of it. And everybody approved of it. It seemed like that was a great idea. The verbiage isn't, they don't know yet, but seemed like some lot of history of baseball in the town of Dylan. Also, they had their first discussions on the amphitheater part of PrAC. And they touched on a couple of different items, touched on parking, conversations of being good neighbors with the surrounding homes and the neighborhood. And Jesse was present, she was there giving a presentation as well and part of, she's still waiting on some numbers for this past year to do the presentation, assuming like last year, is it going to be similar to that or something along that line? And so they'll, they'll continue discussions after Jesse does her presentation, which whenever the timing will be on that. So that was kind of the brief on that. And I've got a little, I did bring a little drawing on or what the presentation was, if anybody didn't see it, or spot a sign for Mr. Albright. And that's what I have. I'm sorry, I meant to turn, yes, please do. Sorry.
Just for the record, I just wanted to make it clear that the planning department received the application for the sign. And so they've done, they've gone through their analysis and their review process. But since it's related to a town park, a town facility, they wanted to bring it in front of the Parks and Rec Committee and make sure that we, that we all like the design and the location and all that kind of stuff. So.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Linda.
Sure.
Any other council member comments or committee reports?
I just wanted to put a plug in for the next community forum on Thursday, December 4 at 5:30 PM at the Lord of the Mountains Meeting Hall. And the topic this time is economic development and how we support economic development as and the balance between residents and visitors' needs.
Great.
So please come.
Thank you. Other council member comments or committee reports? Meeting agenda review, any changes, Nathan?
There are no changes.
Great. Thanks, everyone. We'll meet back here at seven o'clock to start the regular meeting. I'm going to get some dinner now.